What's her name downstairs?
No.
That's exactly who it is.
Eric Lott.
Yeah. That's who it is.
You go to another.
Yeah. Tell her to chop. No. Would you reopen the session or something? Okay. Okay. Right, we're gonna go back into open session then. Um. Ms. Taylor, thank you guys for coming today, we appreciate it. Uh. We do, we have some questions for you, uh. And we wanna hear everything you have to say. Uh, but before we get started. And I'm not really sure how to guide this yet, but we'll get through it together, so. First things first. The letter of credit. Where do we stand with that?
It is where you go, the credit for project, we just need to hold over all hands. Because we're, we're on topic. We have. A probably a lot of events. That's been sitting there. Waiting. We couldn't deny, we didn't get as good as Maria screwed in with Mayor Coleman about on monthly basis. We would get other hours more. But with the changes that we discovered with the land. And the ladies and the governor. Land. The letter of credit is only gonna be there for many years. Well, if you have to get what the land is gonna be, or what has, what the site is gonna be, before you can get the rest of the biz. There's not enough time. For that letter of credit to be good. Or then the big one again. That makes sense.
Yeah.
So you would have to pull on that, we kept the money in St. Charles. In the bank all the time. Um, John and Natalie put it in the bank, because it's available on the phone, he said. They're ready to go, there were some questions about whether or not in the language of the emails and. Maria. Andrew and Karen Kirby, who's emailing as well. There's a little bit of question in the emails that the contract board. We need to determine last. How many did it send to the bank? About if we need to be some retention money? Uh, and if any, like if it is ninety-five percent, we release on the draw, or if it's a hundred percent or a few. The language, so we have a whole hundred twenty percent. Permission. Right? And so, um. We agreed that we could have money released as their draw, as their perspective done, and it's going to be a complete attempt. Because we didn't want, nobody wanted, was for us to be anchoring, not being a subsidiary. Because the money wasn't immediately stacked, it was said. Okay, except that, they consented, right?
Yes. What percentage are you, what's the release rate? If you ask.
Well, so, I had thought it would be a hundred or twenty. We're hoping a hundred and twenty, so then, they declared it to be released, and she said that by the birth. She would say probably a hundred. The old industry standard, according to the underwriters, was. It would be a ten percent retention, that they said we weren't providing out, it would be a five percent. So they had wrapped it. About four different varieties of letter of credit, and you still don't know which one is acceptable in the town tax.
Okay.
Uh, you. Anybody who sent us. Uh. Both want to do, uh, private two.
Also, I, I asked the bank to do that, they said the bank doesn't wanna make it horrible until they know the lady that's. Yeah, well, I said that, you know, you, I was not afraid of the great, any kind of change. The bank was just coming to me, asking me what retention rate it was, and that wasn't the issue at the press, that's why I asked you to email.
Okay, so, I guess. When is it determined that you go from the bank? When the percentage will be released? When quarter of the project is, quarter of the shell is completed? And percentage release?
Uh, he said generally, monthly, at the end of the month. They give an inspection. And notify you, so we can do it at any increments, or any time, right? That the town wants, it could be monthly, it could be every six days. However, the shell will go up with. So this letter of credit is gonna be in effect for any.
Sure.
Because we already comped, the building is being inspected on. And once we get the symbol figured out, it's only gonna take like two hundred weeks, three months, seven. For the shell. So that's two weeks, and then. Whenever the steel structure is brought to the site, then it comes up in a power. So this letter of credit is to report, and we have set aside the funds, and the funds are sitting there.
Ready.
Yeah.
But it takes any. The letter of credit, credit hasn't been issued yet, but the contract hasn't been hired for us, because they.
Other than hiring, and we have the essence, that has been signed by the architect. Um, so now we need to be within that ninety day window, and now things even said, wait, this is one, well, as soon as it's six months, you just need to know. Actual thing that now has been signed, when it comes to confidence. What retention percentage and, uh, and the, the time?
Well, paragraph eight nine. Paragraph eighteen one, financial agreement. It states. Such financial agreement, every green letter of credit, abandoned performance bond. That is back to the town. In the amount equal to one hundred and twenty percent. Of owner's engineering and architectural estimate. Which is approved by the town's engineer. Which you are. Uh, of the shell improvement. Does that not answer that question right there?
I don't think deeply it answers the question, who's the money that is in that, it doesn't talk about. What they say, it doesn't talk about the time frame. So. It doesn't say that. If it says it, and I have the exact shell number, if I can. But if the shell is like, frankly, doesn't look good. And we have spent. A million to get the building built. Getting that million released, there's already another million of that could be. Right, that was like, so then if that can be released, it will be good. So that's the. The question is, how often? These. Decisions are gonna be made, and then, if it's ninety-five percent, a hundred, a hundred and twenty percent, on the completed itself.
That would be the answer, that for answer, that we know that what's hold on this. Uh, and.
Uh, and I don't think she's saying that's all. How about the previous time you said?
Yes.
I just guess which.
These are the things that come with the budget.
From the letter of credit.
Yes.
So. So the only thing that's holding up the letter of credit is the fact that they're waiting for us to tell them. How often we wanna release the percentage.
Exactly.
And. Yeah, that's pretty simple for us to, that problem figured out, that'd help us people who. Actually know a little bit about construction.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, my next question is, what's realistic? What's a realistic number?
Can I read another paragraph? Okay. This is part of the agreement, it's not part of the agreement, it's part of the deed. Guarantee, which is y'all. Shall close in twelve months, today, and first year written. Above on the construction loan, your other financing group of the town. Manager. That allows periodic withdrawals. Based on the leasing work. Furtherance of redevelopment. So. Tom, does that say we just have to. Set the town manager to approve the problems? And then say it has to be a certain percentage, why? But they do have to have a bond. That's a hundred and twenty, whatever. So that's saying right there. That the town manager can approve. Release the local payments.
Figure out. Uh, and I think it's a pretty standard industry question about how often they can get. Release, or percentage.
Well, was that, you're having it all in your head. Is they, they stretch a certain, they was, they say. We wanna bond this, because this isn't there. We look at those list items. And see what that. Spontaneous value is.
She used every path for. Time.
Well, the bank is telling you.
It's gonna be whether the project.
Only if we spend the money, we could have.
She said exactly what the office said. Once they construct a certain, a little bit of a time.
Okay.
So I got you.
Hey.
Like, I paid, whatever, sixty thousand dollars to the steel building company. That's sixty thousand that goes for the shell, I forgot, the knowledge of the production, the knowledge of the. But, at the end of some period, whenever the state. Designated period to be. In theory, we could say, we could turn over receipts and leave it, spend that much, so we're in, I think we're in the right time for three hundred fifty-one thousand dollars for the next. Part of the construction cost. That then, whether it's ninety-five percent, ninety percent, or a hundred and twenty percent, or a hundred percent. That would be released from the three million dollars, which is one point two. And whatever extent of the band percentage is allowed, and none of that was. Explicit in the economic health agreement, or in the deed to me, and the bank is very. cautious, I think, clearly after the two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Development issues, to know what person is the holder of the LLC. Expecting terms to be, the bank heard yesterday text and said. Should the language be, it would be irredeemable. If the shell is not completed, within, I've got to connect three years from a certain date. And say ninety-five percent of every draw for plus to be released to draw plus. And, this is just that he had another meeting with his underwriters, so the LLC party yesterday, and that's what they made. That's one of the options that they're coming out, but they won't make it a formal agreement until they know what the.
Are you borrowing money?
We would not for the LLC, we have that, I mean, we will have to provide money for construction after the, after the shell.
So you're wanting to cover the property?
Um. We will, and that is the, there was recognition that there would be the base, yes.
Also, paragraph, you're standing. Let me see. Till redevelopment is completed, the final extended progress stays issued, and the. Restriction period is ended, grantee shall not. Permit, suffer, allow any mortgage loan. Or leave months to ever be dealt by any mortgage. Rather than leave home or this property. Who's not entered into, you know, you. Read it. It's on the deed, or we're talking about that.
There's another paragraph.
Is that another way you? Don't read it a different way? Am I reading it wrong?
Well, there's another paragraph, I'm gonna start it again, hi. Yeah. Is it Joe?
Uh, she's a dog.
Bye. And Marie's available, she's gonna be.
That, um.
I, one of them. Yeah, there's a, there's a schedule, so I'm like, I'm going around for my eight sentences.
She'll do what, hey, you.
Uh.
It's documented.
On the economic element agreement, page four, paragraph C.
Very good. So, please. Oh, so there are two years to read. And. It needs to be stretched out, done over, a lot of little word. That we're talking about, that we can. We can find a way to. Keep this document away.
The, so the. The recognition and exhaust, the recognition of that tilt water pipe. Has created substantial, that appears in.
They were doing a magic tour. The original. Set, based upon.
Um, and.
That water pipe's been there a long time, man.
It is, that is. It is not. Where the original water pipe actually was.
Good, you're good.
Everybody, we got without all this. Um, we are, we are fortunate that, um. That Mr. Denton remembered at the reset of this rating. Before we got too far down the path, that if. We further the question closer to equals, almost in that repeating.
So we thought about that a nice support. Not a fit on the number, it's not fit, I agree with Tom. In part of the building, it's a little maybe, we have started to publish, make sure, like, our. That's what, you know, the person plans, right? Hi. She.
He just have to do, I mean, for complete sets. A problem, and, and then. Because getting the, um, see, because. If they're only gonna be good for ninety days, then before it, the real life, uh. That there was never gonna be a time frame in which it worked. Until we got on that funding.
We want, we want you guys here, and I know that I've made that clear to you as well, we want you guys here. Um, but the more that we, I think, discuss. This document, it almost seems. But it doesn't, it doesn't matter, and so a lot of it is, is wrong. And it just doesn't hold a lot of balance. Um, of merit. Uh. So, I don't, I don't really know. What to do, or how to move forward. With this, so what, what is it that you all need from us specifically, I know you need the LLC? And how to know what retention percentage I need. But. I don't even know where to start with that. Obviously, I'm not an expert, what comes to that, to that, oh, to Mr. Blackburn, do you have a?
Well, the letter of credit, as I'm understanding the conversation. Uh, we need a town attorney to hear something. From your banker. You said that there's four.
Cause they just wanna send it a virtual draft, and so they knew we got ones. And it's.
Can they just write draft? Like, could they not send, I don't know how that.
You have, and then they actually put y'all below the sign, so I, if you want me to get full up to Mr. Brown's. I have more than that, until they shut up. The money is there, the money's gonna stay there.
I think that's the best option, I think the best option right now, for us to move forward with this letter of credit, is for Mr. Blackburn, and your banker. To get in touch, you see the four drafts, if, if that's okay with you.
Uh. The town attorney, the town attorney.
Right, so that's between you.
Four, that's gonna need to make a decision.
Well, that's fine, but. We can make the decision, that's fine, but.
It's gonna be sold, that could be sent it out, but the email that was. Changed last summer. Was that, you know, a returning related to Taylor, how I'm willing to release. Part of the LLC is construction progress. The art, the architect, the architect, and/or engineer, Mr. Denton, needing to certify. What percentage of the construction has been completed, and in what. Play in. This case. Hold back is likely to be required, so in other words. If twenty-five percent of the structure is completed. The town is not likely to release twenty-five percent of the, uh, bond. So. Twenty-five percent, then they release. Well, twenty-five percent is, is four, so you can probably release.
Right, right, what's typical of this, okay. And what's state law? It's hard to. So, if they ask you twenty-five percent, you for those twenty percent. They protect five, two, thirty.
Okay, so.
Did that typically go on?
So, that's this industry's ending, I guess.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's pretty simple. To, uh, come to that conclusion, but. So I guess where the problem. Is that we've got the town attorney. Uh, sorry, town engineer. Who's supposed to be sort of telling the board or us, okay, this is how it works, but. Say that the person is supposed to be telling us. Is employed, so, first of all, I guess the first thing to do is probably employ. Different town engineer for this project. Uh, the owner yourself stated that, and for two masters. But we need somebody to relate to the town when we're acting on this. Um. So that the town can make a decision. When Marie and I had this email exchange last July. I thought we should be getting letter of credit pretty soon thereafter. Uh, regarding. What the standard is for. And it would have been so much easier had. Town engineer said, okay, this is what the loan was gone, so this will be gotten free to. And then that would be related to. This Taylor Verger engineer.
Mr. Denton told us earlier, he didn't realize he was named the engineer, so I apologize. The town's open during this position.
It's, it's the, um. It's. The rock centers engineer or, um, architect, who's going to certify how much of the project is completed. Uh, so, that, that's what the third side's gonna do, and then it's up to our engineer to say, yes, that's correct, and, uh, but. To. Fulfill. Oh, you don't know what's, what the standard is.
Do you think the bank could have, just, with the, the boat? Engineer?
Uh, I think it's time to.
No, okay, so. Uh. Are we talking about, they only, the soccer?
No, I'm just talking about this particular asset. If you're, if you're looking. If you're saying that twenty-five percent is completed, and then it comes to our town engineer, go out and borrow the twenty-five, say that. You know, there. It's not at work. If you're making the same decision on both. And this is designed to sort of have a checking balance. So that the town can agree to release this. That can, that confirmed. Independently that it's completed. So. The, the amount, sounds like it's pretty easy to get it to let the bank know, and maybe we can. Somehow know you're agree upon that. Based on what we just found out, with the standard. And. That's a brief to the bank, that's one, the whole side.
I don't feel comfortable sitting up here and saying any of those numbers again, or to repeat them, or to create. Something for us, right, or for something for us to agree on, um, so.
I'm just saying, if. We have some numbers that we can, could, could be different than what was just presented, still. It'd be pretty close where we're at, and you'll have to agree to if we want a letter of credit.
Okay, so what do you recommend we do now?
Um. Confirm again what the standards are. And give the board options to where, where is the gray area. I wish that I could, uh, quite some mention, unfortunately, I've. Never been in the construction industry. I don't have that, not. Maybe. Bit. But, uh, Johnny has, Johnny could absolutely be. Uh, the person to get these questions. And he just sort of alluded to what the possibilities are of this, wow, though, and it was. Um, he said. If they want twenty-five, we hold that five, and then. Right, so if they complete twenty-five percent, we would hold that five, and then twenty. Right? That, and that's standard.
They're hoping they hold that five percent.
Right, right, we get that twenty.
Uh, do you? Five percent of twenty-five.
How? Five percent of a hundred and twenty. Five percent of what are we holding?
So, if, if they ask for a hundred thousand. You'd be in that.
Right. But that hundred thousand is going to be based upon a percentage of completion.
But, you have, that's. You could talk about a percentage, but real numbers. You're, you're talking about three days.
Yeah, it's one hour.
So I, I thought it's determined.
Yeah, if you, if you're talking about three days, uh. Or nothing. And each time they ask for a draw, you confirm that, and you would pay them. That amount less.
Allow us to take now.
Confirm that a hundred thousand dollars that was worth anything.
That's where the engineers' job, to go out and see if that hundred thousand dollars of work has been done.
Then we would.
When was that?
If you're talking about the shell. I'm gonna rely on the architect, and. I'm not gonna complain, because that's not my career, my career is to do what I have.
But the bank is needing specific increments when it's gonna be released.
Right.
So then.
I mean, a thirty day cycle, no more than so. Now, if they take sixty days to report when they need a draw. Then. That would, that would be perfectly accepted, but if they get asked, like, thirty days.
Basically, what they completed in that thirty days. And that is, that is standard, the, the, the thirty day draw, it could be your sixty day, not. The minimum is thirty. Now.
The, 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 the shortest time is twenty days.
And of course, if we had our, we, if we had two engineers. My very bad attitude. But if we had two engineers, we would be able to say, oh, is that correct, and oh, yeah, that's how we. But I don't know if anybody's comfortable enough. You know, making that decision, because. We've gotta get our own engineer, we could, and this thing will move along so much faster. You can't. It's just too much for Mr. Denton to be involved.
So, you, we. Y'all sitting there talking about draws and stuff like that. We're not paying them any money. The draw is releasing so much from the bond, I say.
Yes, their money, their.
Their bond, we got a bond on their money. Twenty-five percent. Will give, will release twenty percent of that bond, so. Let's just, let's just make sure there's no confusion to TV owners, that we're not. Building this place, that this is only a bond, we want to guarantee that you have. For whatever reason, everything falls apart, and they walk away, we want to have guaranteed, that we have something that we can try to sell somebody, a shell of them. And if they fall short of the shell, we give the money back, finish the shell. And sell.
That's why we're building five percent. Quitting five percent.
Their money.
It was sure. It's better to describe it, I, and I understand, it's like building a house, and you contract with your builder. And what's the? Footers report, you release five percent, what's the brands? Sweet five percent. That's.
We need, we'll be out of there, so.
It's not gonna be the town of Dallas. It's just, I'll go to their bank.
So, I'm, I'm personally good with. What Johnny has said is being the terms. For us to go ahead and maybe proceed. Are we in a call meeting, special meeting? Can we do actions? I'm personally. I'm personally one hundred percent fine. With go ahead and. This board, if they choose to. Going on. On Mr. Denton, it's what he has told us, it's the industry standard. Just to contact the bank and go with the industry standard. Are you good at that, Tom?
Sure.
Okay, and then we probably need to look at. Return and get this engineering thing straightened out. Then, then the next question comes in. If we, if, yeah, I, does the board wanna do that? So, you know.
Would everyone be okay with moving forward with the industry standard?
With the letter of credit.
With the letter of credit.
I have a reach, you know.
Right.
I make a motion. I make a motion to move forward on the, I wanna talk about the letter of credit, and in accordance with the industry standard of twenty-five, twenty, is that what you said?
Twenty-five.
Thank you.
Pretending five percent.
Five percent of the completed, if they spend a hundred thousand, yeah. Nine to five.
Released.
Thirty-three days.
Released.
That's my motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Can you push? So, Katie.
Uh, how do we go about forming, yes, you can tell the县的 town, thirty days, the, the amount that is spent in that provision.
Perfect.
And no sign.
That makes me a dear too.
Now, uh.
All right, so.
And then we need to, uh, probably, um.
Oh.
So do you want your nothing stack?
Correct fifteen, the extension.
Yeah, that's what I was, you're trying to ring up, so, um, paragraph fifteen talks about the extension, and we do need to, yes, do you know?
I, I, of course, I need to continue.
Okay. With the engineer decision?
We're bringing a second engineer. Tom has recommended that we get a second engineer.
Uh, I, I, this is one of, all right, and so, if, if, if y'all feel like I need to step back for a second. Uh.
That's my.
But, 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 let me, let me just, if, if, so, similar scenario, we, Tom's relationship with our show to Dallas on this end of that, uh, you know, if y'all don't feel like you can trust me to look after the project, then I'm, I'm more willing to step back, and I don't know another route.
I did say that.
Well, I understand.
I haven't said that one bit.
You can just say, I just, I, I'm just, I, I, I was really passionate about this project, and love this project. I was like, twenty, twenty, maybe I should pass it into the, pursue a relationship, but I was passionate about the problem, and the board at that time was okay with, with the relationship. Uh, so if, if I do, if I need to step back, just, just let me know, you know, of Dallas, and I, I want the best for Dallas and best of this project, so if I need to step back, so.
And he is not as well, he. He has helped us on a lot of other hits. He got.
I'm saying. This whole problem is we want a year, just a five minute discussion from our town engineer who wasn't even aware that he was a town engineer, which is another problem in and of itself.
I, I wasn't aware that this was, this was an issue, I wasn't involved in those conversations that, that the, the, uh, finally process was an issue, so.
I think personally, moving forward, you know, you know, our, our expectations, and I'm speaking freely here, our expectations, if, if this remains the way that it is, that you do have open communication with us as well as with Taylor and the Aquatic Center, so that we are all on the same page and more frequently, um, than it has been. That's, now that you know, I mean, in this, again, this has just been brought to all of our attention now, so I think whatever has happened has happened, and we can move forward from this, and, and with clear expectation, that, that would be okay, as long as everyone else is okay with that.
I, any of y'all, if you have any time to answer. I, I, I'm set available, any question, I don't know the answer. I don't really have.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
I have. Actually, fifty percent.
Alan?
I don't think that, uh, had nothing to do with confidence in what Mr. Dent is doing, I think what Tom referred to is the same person making a decision for two different parties, it had nothing to do with you at all, and I know you don't even have this document, so you didn't even know, I think that's the only thing he was saying.
I'm saying, I'm saying for the shale, I don't know. Ready, uh, it's what the shale construction.
So anytime you would, you would communicate with their architect, and then whatever information you get with their architect, you will relay back to us or, or Mr. Dent, that's great.
But he is their engineer.
As well as ours.
Right.
But, um, but to my understanding, based on what this does, either the architect or the engineer, so both could, so I'm seeing that as him being in the clear for being able to communicate with the architect, and then us as our engineer, and they're, they're communicating back and forth, which they would anyway.
It also puts this great, it's a burden on him to, to be talking to us and tell what's going on. I have no, this is the way I am, I have no problem, Mr. Dent, ten years on both, until it's such times that he sees that he has conflict. And that's what, I, that's where I'm headed.
Yeah.
That's where I'm headed, that once you see that you have a conflict, you can't serve two masters, then you tell one that you're leaving, or the other is leaving, I think that's the way.
You know, well as anybody, honestly, I don't put it out every time.
I know.
That's, understand what I'm saying, because, you know, I, I get to be pointed out the bad guy, a couple of people in that stuff that I read in the real, this is a contract that we're having.
You're looking at the turn.
And I'm looking at that, you know, Aquatic Center's in breach, we haven't done nothing, and we haven't heard nothing, or I haven't, I'm new, and I'm hearing a lot, I know about, and so as long as you're comfortable that you're actually doing an ethical thing and everything, I, I say we keep, keep you doing this. And because it's only going to delay the whole process that much longer, and I don't know what this board's appetite is for delaying it, and so, I, I really don't want to throw nothing, whether it's more, be thrown into it, but as you, you've done the drawings, you're gonna be presenting this revision to the town for approval in the near future, uh, Lord have mercy, if we don't approve it, then you might.
But Taylor.
I'm being on A. There was never any intent not to communicate, um, town manager Strupin myself would email at least monthly, if not every couple of days, um, and I was in a lot of communication with Mayor and with, with manager Strupin, so there are copious emails going back and forth about what potential delays are, which documents are where, what's going on, and so I do not want the board or Alderman to in any way think that there was any obligation or, um, attempt to not relay information. All of that information is in the email form, um, and it's almost that kind of, and sometimes we just met, but, uh, you know, it's constant communication.
Right.
There was a constant communication, the way I'm seeing it, our manager, our representatives, whatever, the previous staff did not make that plus. That's, that's neither here nor there.
So here we are.
Yeah, but I think I just didn't want you all to think that, that it works.
Right, right, that makes, that makes sense, um, and I know that we don't want to win this contract, I don't know what word is, but we wanna move forward with it, so, Chris, how, what do you think with this?
Um. I, I think it would be good for the. Uh, the. The. Um. As far as the extension of the.
Yeah, that's where we are now, we need to move forward with an extension.
Please that be completed, but we're outside that time, we probably need to, uh, issue an extension, just, just carry that along, say the extended deadline for this, hopefully, um, it can be something that can be, you know, agree with, not in front of me, but there's like a timeline with instructions for the begin, and then thirty-six months, it'll be completed, uh, we just need to revamp the dates.
Right, and so we revamped those dates, and Taylor, um, I guess we need to put a process or something in place to make sure that these are, are met, and so for us to even start with a timeline, do you have a timeline? You know, we'll have this letter of credit, I could imagine, within the next week, right?
In another month.
Right, so we can have that within the next week, and then what happens?
Um, and then, we're in the process of getting the bids for the revised cycle based on the newest settlement.
Okay, and so, but then you get the bid, but don't, do the revised drawings have to come through us first?
Well, we need to know if it's economically feasible.
I see.
We need it, the change of this is hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that is, that causes delay when we're a nonprofit raising money from people, so we can't commit to a plan if it's a plan that we can't afford to do.
So you have to get the bids on it first, decide on one, we.
Then.
Then we get it, and hopefully, okay. Okay.
I happen to disagree, the last page of the deed. You did say that you have, could complete the land acquisition completed by six thirty twenty twenty-two, shale construction completed by twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two, two pool construction completed by six one twenty twenty-three, building up a fit in FFE twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three, so you did make those predictions at that time when you were doing your development. Can, can you not make those predictions now?
Well, things happened in the field there that I did not anticipate.
One of the biggest limitations getting that piece of a, they prepared it.
You ain't telling me all that land when they, when we sold the deed, so don't, I'm, I'm very wary of it.
So that, that six months, the whole earth will be dropping off the map, right, when you have signs.
Literally, you are, two, black mouth.
Black mouth. Business. So what I'm saying to you, you say you can't give us something, did it one time, we're asking you to do it again, so we can give you a waiver that is reasonable and acceptable, because right now you're in breach, we can send you a thirty day later and put an end to all this, and then we're not gonna do that, so all we're asking for you is to step back and punt and give us some dates.
Oh, and I also know when they give you a pretty little date, a hundred little dates.
I would tell you.
How, how do we start with, how long is it gonna take to get the bids for?
Here we got five.
So that, so the site of fits should be in my.
That's true.
This bit.
Maybe we should hear something.
About the something that, it would be, and if I had control over the slums and then they gave us bids, I would be a bunch of, I don't know, for seven years, it would not, because I'm not a little bit of a ski leader, um, so anything I say, it's only said in good faith, it was, but that's, that's intention for this project, you look down at that.
Right.
But if y'all don't want us, I need to know.
Well, that is, I don't, I don't think anybody here said, we don't want you.
Here's what I think, here's what I think, I, I know, we want you, um, I think what would be realistic is for, if you're getting the bids, maybe tomorrow, I think we give you guys a week to come up, maybe that will give you enough time to come up with an idea, something realistic for dates, um, we all have a work session on April thirtieth that I think would be appropriate for after you give us the date, we can discuss those then, and then, and move forward from that.
We should have further bids by then as well.
Right.
But for instance, to give you an idea, the three people that made us the original site, those, those, two of them out on, I don't know, percent, don't matter what the cost is, they can't do it terribly good.
Okay.
You gotta be careful, improve whatever.
Improve that bit, right.
Any monthly, but I can, I can fault especially.
Okay.
I said, that's not a problem.
Okay.
So I run in problems with the initial people, and then the contracting them, because they have to approach.
Right.
And I wish I could control that.
Right. So I think that's, that's good information for us to have as well, um, so I think if you're able to get Mr. Blackburn next week and let us know, um, what some possible dates are, we can talk about those, we can work out this contract for the extension, um, are we allowed to go ahead and go into action to approve this, or can we just wait? Can we do that, and then put approved tentative date, or, so I don't know, whatever the motion would be for that, or no?
I, I think, if I were a board member, I would wanna hear back from testing aquatics with a tentative timeframe, and see if it matches up with your ideas before we look at an extension.
But I think we need to give the board a week to, Johnny.
Site information.
Right.
I can, I will have the other bid style.
Right.
But we did get the town that collectible load information they needed, um, and nobody wants to stunt a little bit, I'm not sure.
And that's what, that's what I'm saying, is that we need something like this, that predicts when you're gonna be completed, and you need more than a week to get that to get.
Okay.
Trying to comply with original.
Right, yes, that's what I was understanding.
They, they should take.
Um, probably once it looks like the site work is reachable, and, and could have been, the site work looks back six hundred thousand dollars toward that program.
Or, uh, and you will make it after we're moving site after you're here, you're hoping that you say, okay, it's gonna toss this much.
From all this, all the, all the.
You'll send out a site, you'll see the bid cards, you'll determine what happens. You want to, or any.
No, it came to a shock.
That it came back, so why, if you get a scene out of it.
And then remove everything in the evening.
So. I don't think, think you're gonna get cheaper quick.
Thank you for having like this.
But y'all got five, on your webpage, it says you're building eleven million dollar bid, so you've got five million, so you're teaching this for six million.
No, I mean, we're approved for up to eight billion more, but, um, I don't want to worry about that money, because we have a lot of outstanding money in pledges, we have pledges up to five, so for instance, we have four hundred and four billion in the, we got our bet, and we got, we paid you all a hundred and three four nine for the land, so it doesn't make everybody know, we didn't pay for the money.
Right.
Um, so we got a hundred and three four nine in the land, we, and some equipment and things like that, um, but for instance, first gas, first gas and funds, we got four hundred thousand dollars from them, we only received two forty of that, so we have another hundred of them, we have two hundred and forty from another organization coming in, there's two fifty from the county that started coming in, something break ground, we've got all this money that will come in, and I am not fundraising in first, so. And I am not fundraising in first through this. I want to make sure everyone's equipped. And I want shoulders in the dirt for riding off.
We already bet you.
I'll take a fifth here, my.
So.
Do you?
Do you think that we can have something like this by our next board meeting? May the seventh?
I'm looking.
Johnny, is that a reasonable? Or do we need more time?
Or do we need to push it to June?
May two, maybe.
June, June, please.
May fourteenth is our next one, oh, okay. Thanks, I need to change that.
And I don't think, yeah, sorry for talking about, but I would.
On the back page. Oh, is there not one?
It's exhibit, babe.
She doesn't have that.
I mean, I've seen it, I would have had it from the. I would like that. Uh, but yes, we should really do that, I think it's safer, like, to make sense, to give faster time.
Okay, so let's push for June for something like this, if you're okay with that. And Mr. Dent, you think that's okay? Okay, so let's push for June for that. Another question that I have with this, if we are in breach, are we under any legal, we're going to be in legal trouble for any of that? Or are we okay with leaving it alone and then deciding later on?
For seasons.
We don't have.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're okay on that, actually. Okay.
We've covered our remains, uh, discussed.
Okay, that's all.
That's what you gotta do.
Yes.
Yes, well, I want to still have opinions.
Yes, and you have that in June, the buildings are right here.
Oh, in the. Two buildings.
Yes, so the two buildings, uh, we use those, I say we need the town balance uses those for parks recreation. And we would like to keep those. Those are, it's a big deal for us to keep those completely and.
Um, what we did discuss, when there were emails that they were going back and forth, was that they, they told us to go.
Right.
But the other thing that was thought, of which we're not here anytime that we were just, was that you only did the electrical lines to stay later. Which has caused some more problems, some more delays.
Right.
And you know what to do. And they did come up with a suspension that was a alter release of a very small area where there'd be electrical business. So the town doesn't have to do that, it's transforming, it probably is a long process, or try not.
Yeah, there's a transformer, there's a trough around that building. It feeds everything in that park.
It feeds the silence.
It feeds everything in that park. Uh, there's actually primary ones up there. But, I mean, that's at the back corner of that building, so it didn't stay there. Really, our rest building can stay, at least that one will go. Uh, it's got a fence around it too right there. But can we not redo this property lines somehow or no? Instead of long-term leasing, a network collar.
Let me study.
Yeah, that'd be a huge help. We have nowhere else to move this.
See, see what I mean? I was going to say, but the like. Uh, I can size that. Let me see.
It draws a little.
Why don't you give it to us? And you. Now, that might be a really good thing to consider. We're sitting here, the catbird seat, as far as where this contract is being right back. And we're bidding number five. My opinion, to give you an extension, because you're going to ask for a three year. Ain't no doubt in my mind, you're going to ask for a three year extension. Because it ain't going to be easy getting your stuff in, we know that, everybody built it out. Right?
I don't think I could.
But I'm just telling you, in, in realistic terms, you started this, you were going to be in there for you. We turned dirt on the town with Sheldon, and we were asked two year more, a major extension. So I'm, I'm no way thinking that you will be ready to go in. Like you, two, three years tops. Because there's going to be something else. Or if we ever rain it, okay, if it starts raining tomorrow, it keeps on raining. It rains, it's a heavy rainy summer, it's going to lay that next one. And then there's stealing market, war happens, but you do have to cover that contract. Or over the LA, as you know, where the climate. So what I'm saying is, I fully expect Johnny's going to tell you, you're going to have to ask for three. After I expect, so you think. Just remember that if you're thinking about this close piece of land.
We would greatly appreciate that, that helps us.
We, we went into this, we said zero back, I hope they already have it there. Now, that's why our fault, I told you it was only. But I'm no thing about that.
And so I was even involved with the conversation where I asked about the building, she was told that they need to be moved.
Yeah, there.
Oh, yeah, there, I won't doubt, so they said, who said?
We're all taking that there. Uh, so.
Uh, the board, previous board, the board already be in there. But with zero back, what, how, where are?
But so you know, we didn't ask the question, we were calling it, we did.
Oh, that's fine, but they can't.
Uh, and so we worked well with the town, we were exchanging information about blocks. Could continue to use them to be a center.
Like center of the company, units of town, we'll still have the part back.
Totally dependent on how. I'm not going to stay under the cover, there's no way I'm going to build any more. We're going to call it taking six or months, so. We're always. But I, I have to know. That they were a moving problem, facilities, it's just extended coverage issue. So that's what we have talked about, we agree on the company, the electrical lines, but we discovered that the electrical lines shouldn't be moved because it's so many, and we so positive. The town, and the reason we talked about the hundred year lease was, you said, if you all made any interest on that. Because if somebody got blown up by the transformer, I didn't want to be responsible for what happened. So that was the reason there was a discussion of, you know, hundred year dollar rate release or whatever. So that y'all could maybe change insurance or something like this. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It was you that did make the buzz, did you think?
Did that be part of the discussion after Mr. Dent looks at maybe admitting that court at a June meeting?
What, what was going to be right there? I mean, if you say our now, how kids, how close, I mean, is that?
As soon as you hear the ground. They're definitely going to talk.
Yes. So what we're going to do about plant laws?
Uh, so something about a parking lot part of it is that parking lot will not be built most of the time. And most of the time, there is a lot of in and out traffic, we just walk apart on that side.
Oh, I know, they're involved a lot of times. You have to park a certain area.
And so there on the time that the parking lot will be built, it's on the. And with that fall schedule, when we talk about how we're making the town, the town does report advance what they're going to do. They also will know approximately here in advance when there will be needs. So we can share our attention with, share that information cooperatively, and even be willing to share some parking spaces back and forth. Was our intention. Um, and then a lot of facilities are near in parks and things. So there's kind of. You, you got here late before we're walking, I'm sorry, you should have been out here earlier.
I'm sorry, we were told to have zero impact in town stuff, zero. So right now, Rizma are asking these questions because it is having an impact, okay? So where, uh, that part of this, we didn't know this was going to be close to saying.
To the bottom of it, he said.
I understand.
If you, if you have a partner.
He said, the parking spot, or this hall bit.
And they should have come earlier, given any.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood what you were saying there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she was just saying that. So the main thing, like.
Because a lot of times, we don't have to be. For our parks.
Right.
There are tennis facilities, there are parking fields, there are only going, sadly only for all these things, so.
The other, um, the last, the last thing I know that I wanted to discuss, or we wanted to discuss, was the, the road from. And I know you guys worked really hard and fought with Eagles to get that access right. And we had discussed using Robbie Curley's land as an access. Where are we with that? Is that still a possibility? Uh, just I, my main concern is our, the pedestrians, our kids' safety, as well as, you know, adult's safety. And how close the road is, sidewalk to, you, you never know what can happen. You say that there's in and out traffic regularly, which I hope there is. But I don't want it to be right there where our kids are and our citizens. And I know that you have to care for your, for our own safety. And so I was just curious if there is another way that we can use a main entrance through that back Captain Collins road? Or how to, how to make that work?
So, uh, I talked to Johnny, I know for these, um, he, you know, sort of very. We, we have talked for at least, and I don't know if that means engineering laws is going to be able to happen, we talked about that. If it is, we could probably scramble it. If the town wants a south entrance into town to provide another entrance. The Curleys would even be willing to discuss the town, maybe be robed and then us doing this, an auction. And then that would give y'all another split. And he said he had come to the town about four. Um, whether it be, they are still willing to have some conversations, if it's people without like, I agree with their will. The other thing is they have this property, their property extends beyond, I can't see what we, it's something. So their property kind of knows this, and a part of this is cut off by our bidding. So if the road would then make it accessible for that piece of property, that might have to be a real risk. Value if that notice. So it's right out of the law, by the weed.
Okay.
And so I'm not speaking for them.
I'd like to help sketch later, it's difficult. Uh, I can bring some sets and look at it, see what can get. They do like to be fresh.
And I don't, we don't have this, it's a, they broke, broke sad. But if we put it in, we wouldn't leak it any other route.
Right.
Because actually, and I would be on property.
You're going for so much, and I think that's where.
I can say, say the answer. Do you think for, really, we need the best solution?
You're talking about on the left side, the road, are you doing it in?
Either.
You can say, you're saying all of them.
Either the base in, what you find her sidewalk, or that you find a sidewalk, maybe whoever's trying to put that. Thanks for watching.
But right now, we're the actual swimmers, is right beside her. We did the property it was, and I don't know of any incidents or problems or anything. If anything, we used to swim here to call the principal, and then though they said there's stuff happening on Carter Park probably. Not stuff happening at the swimming facility. But when during the park, a lot of people are hitting this, like we're seeing across the bay. We would see people doing stuff at Carter Park, and it made them almost, you know, they would have watched. With all the gear.
Johnny, if you could get those, some of those drawings or graphs for us for the road, that's a grant to you, that's something else I think that we, we would talk about. That'd be a good option. Do you have anything else?
I would like to be on, or, uh, May the eleventh. Get all of our summer concert series, uh, Bailey, Repay, and the Mayfair Festival as well. Uh, Bailey, Repay, we started seven B at Mayfair, is, I believe Alex, we're looking at two o'clock PM. Over that Saturday. See, we'll see each other. Hold on, everyone, uh, May eleventh, kick on up for some concert series.
Well, that one's okay.
And I'm about to understand that, that our June. Regular meeting, Johnny, uh, will be present.
They should be on there. Second, Tuesday.
Second Tuesday, six thirty two.
If Yana would be here.
We're working on five to eight weeks.
Yeah.
I just hear.
Yeah, I'd be great.